All right, welcome everybody. This is the Villarica Planning Commission's October 1st, 2019 meeting. I think our 85th day of this year at 90 degrees or more, so it's nice and cool in here. So that's a good thing. There's a call to order. And first up is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt this agenda?
I have reviewed the agenda and find no need for changes, so I move for approval of the agenda.
Yeah. Okay. I have a motion to adopt the agenda. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed. Motion carries 3-0. First up is old business. Does everybody have a copy of the minutes of September?
Move approval of the minutes as presented.
We have a motion to approve the minutes as presented of the September 3rd, 2019 meeting. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the September 3rd, 2019 meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed. Motion carries 3-0 to approve the minutes of September 3rd, 2019. Now for new business.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. Tonight we have an application CU-02-19, conditional use application for 101, 3 West Parkway. This one is a fairly simple application. It's for a house of worship in an existing strip center in the GC Zone, general commercial. There's currently a house of worship on-site in a different suite, and that one's been there at least since last year. They came before the Planning Commission as well as the City Council for approvals for conditional use permit in December of last year. And the, this is a different house of worship, obviously, and they're proposed to go in Suite A. There's approximately 35 parking spaces on-site, and there's unmarked parking that's in the back that really shouldn't be for parking, of course. It's really just a driveway area. And this house of worship, I think a key distinction here really is, this house of worship is going to have services on Saturdays, and the existing house of worship is having services on Sundays. So in the office, we had concerns prior to knowing that, that we would have two houses of worship going on at the same time with not enough parking going on, but that doesn't seem to be the actual case. There's approximately 60 people that are supposed to use this new house of worship, members, if you will. And we do have the applicant here tonight, and I'm sure that you've all had time to review some of the materials in the packet, and we apologize for the actual application not making it into your packet, but we had some staff changes based on Kirsten being on maternity leave. So if you have any other questions for me?
Yep. I understand that this new church would operate essentially on Sunday, the current one.
Saturday.
I thought it was the other way.
The, the new house of worship would operate on a Saturday, is it?
Yeah.
First one Saturday? My apologies, I got it backwards then.
And therefore, you know, the, I guess the request is that they would operate at a time other than the current church, which closes, essentially closes on Saturday at 5:00?
That is correct, yes.
And everybody's in agreement for that?
Yes.
All right, so there'll be two separate churches in the same space? Another, just one on Saturday, one on Sunday?
That is, that's my understanding, that is correct, yes.
Okay.
Well, not in the same space.
Not in the same space, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's one in, one suite, and then this new house of worship will be in Suite A, I believe the other one's in Suite B.
Oh, in another suite?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I got it, I got it, okay.
Has there been any difficulty with parking in the current setup?
Not that I've been made aware of. When I went out for my site visit, and mind you, this was, of course, during the work week and during the workday, there was approximately five to six cars in the parking lot. Some of the other businesses that are there, just so you'll know, is a blinds retailer, a 24/7 laundry wash-and-fold, an insurance agency, a florist, and a realtor. So that's typically during the day businesses. Some of them are obviously open 24/7 with the wash-and-fold, and of course, some of them are probably during the daytime as well on the weekends.
Any questions for staff? Okay, all right, we'll bring them up.
All right.
The applicant would step forward and let us know what you're trying to do, and give us your name and address. Do they need phone number? No, just name and address. Name and address, okay, thanks.
Good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Henry George, and I live at 1, 2, and 9 Ashberry Drive, Villarica, Georgia, 30180. So we are, me and my wife, we are the one in charge of the, the worship center that we want to use 101, Suite A for. So we look at it, and we search and look at it that previously it's been used, and there are testimony, especially in this community, and there are communities accommodating and progressing, so we will actually want to start our house of worship in a flourishing community like the one we have, we saw and found here. And we also long plan to positively impart and contribute our own quota to the development of this community as we join these happy people in this vicinity.
Okay, all right. Any questions for the applicant?
Do you have no problem with the timing in conflict with the other, is, is another church?
I think the other one was on Saturday, and ours is on Sunday, so there's no problem about that.
Hold up until your train disturbance.
Yes. There we go.
Train, it's not gonna be, it's indoor. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, he blew a late one on that.
Still there.
Sadist. Where he goes, okay, continue.
Good. So the timing is not gonna be a problem. One is on Saturday, and one is on Sunday, so, and we will be there for the, like, 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., so it's not conflicting.
Okay, good. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. At this time, is there anyone else that'd like to come up and speak in favor of this? No takers? Anyone speaking against? Okay, at this point, the public section is closed.
Yes, and one other thing, in your package you'll find the letter of decision from Bobby Elliott, Community Development Director, on the previous house of worship that was approved back in 2018, and some of the conditions that they had on there. So we, I tried to keep those conditions the same in the staff report, but one change to that would be condition number three for our house of worship. So, obviously, it shouldn't be Saturday, right? Being that their house of worship is on Sunday. So I'm proposing to have that changed to, and if you're in agreement, it should read, no activities for the house of worship shall, shall be really on Saturdays.
On Saturday, right.
Yeah, so I'm gonna mark that out on my copy, and if you're interested in making that change.
Okay. All right. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve this request with the change where no activity is to occur on Saturday, as recommended by staff.
Sure.
I have a motion and a second to approve this with the change. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, motion carries 3-0 for approval. When's the next council meeting?
For this application will be October 22nd.
October 22nd. Up here before the City Council at their meeting and do exactly what you did with us, but our decision will be passed on to them, and then they make the final determination. Okay? All right, thank you. Okay, next up, any staff comments?
No, not, not from this staff.
Any karaoke, anything you want to do? It's staff time right now.
Karaoke night.
That's karaoke night, yes.
We got another item.
I'm sorry. Hang on, let me put these on. There you go. Sorry about that.
No problem, no problem. Just gonna wait till we get the presentation queued up.
Okay.
For the benefit of the public. This is a presentation I did last week at the City Council meeting. Mr. Hannahback was in attendance for that. With this is just an introduction of the zoning ordinance rewrite project for the benefit of the public. Obviously, the Planning Commission has been engaged in this process now for a number of months, starting with the signed ordinance rewrite, and now provided a copy of the current draft of the zoning ordinance back at the beginning of September to begin a review. Simultaneously, the City Council is also reviewing the document and looking forward to it going through the Planning Commission process before it goes to recommendation. Whatever input the Planning Commission has to provide will be annotated, redlined into the version that is forwarded over to the City Council for consideration. So I just wanted to talk just briefly about the process, why we're doing what we're doing as opposed to something else, and what sort of a timeline we're on. Just to try to inform and engage the public that attends or watches this particular meeting.
I guess we need to step around, we want to watch it.
It helps if it's turned on. The first section is basically about what our process is, and we started off the project by doing a forensic audit of our existing zoning ordinance and our existing zoning map. Based off of that, we identified a number of specific issues where there were conflicts with the zoning itself, or how the zoning was applied, or other issues where the zoning was maybe missing ordinances that were more consistent with modern uses. We then looked at a number of cities in the metropolitan area, and also some others throughout the country for best practices, and also in considering thriving communities in the Atlanta metropolitan area like Woodstock, or like Gainesville, or some of these sub-areas that are actually very successful. And what is it about their zoning that allows them to, to work better in the economic and residential environment? And finally, we would take the best parts of these ordinances and sort of craft them together to formulate the ordinance draft that's been presented to the Council and to the Planning Commission as well. And so that's where we are. The process that draft has been distributed, and since then, has actually grown an additional seven pages just from content that's been provided and some additional considerations. So looking at the problems that came out of the forensic audit, starting with the residential zoning districts, part of the problem was primarily, if you look at the residential development in Villarica, I would say 80% of it is done under the PD or the Plan Development Model. And what that does is it allows the developers to basically create their own zoning. So all of Mirror Lake is all Plan Development. All these new subdivisions that were built in the last 10 years are also Plan Development. The problem with that is it doesn't establish a standardized zoning for the city. So everyone that comes in to build houses, they're not going by the zoning ordinance. They're just going, they're just kind of coming in and coming to Plan Commission, to the City Council to create their own zoning. And so this is meant to really allow more of a standardized zoning for smaller lots, which you would find closer to downtown, and then larger lots that may be a little further out in some of the rural or suburban areas. But looking at your zoning currently, your rural development is the large agricultural development, and we looked at, of the lots that are in there, they have to be a specific size in order to qualify under that zoning. They have to be at least one acre. 29% of the properties in this city that are zoned RD don't even comply with the zoning. So there's obviously an issue of how the zoning was applied to those particular residential properties. Single-family residential, you've got one single-family residential zone, which is R20, which requires a 25,000 square foot lot. 38%, almost 40% of all of the lots zoned that did not comply with the zoning requirements. Multi-family development, which is your R14 zoning, which would be for your apartments, some condominiums perhaps if they were out there, but 48% of your multi-family development does not comply with the current zoning. And more astoundingly, when you look at your last residential zoning district, which is Residential Townhouse, or RT, there was a non-conforming rate of 100%. Nothing out there that's a, that's a townhouse is actually sitting in an RT zone. And a lot of the actual townhouses that were built are sitting in your multi-family zoning. So there's just a disconnect of how things were applied in the past that we can't really account for. So that's really a change with respect to adding an additional zoning category for a smaller lot, single-family, reapplying the zoning to the appropriate land uses for, as, as developments were constructed in the past. Now going on to the next section here, we're gonna look at your non-residential development, which would include light industrial, general industrial, general commercial, neighborhood commercial, office institutional. It's one where we have a lot of problems. The first one I wanted to point out was, there's a very large parcel across the street from Shoreline Drive, right outside the main gate of Mirror Lake. This property's been identified as, by the city, is an opportunity for a connector to the downtown area, and also that the Punkin Town Road and Mirror Lake Corridor there has been designated as a no heavy truck traffic area. It doesn't make sense then that this large parcel of undeveloped land would be zoned for industrial use. Industrial is not something you would put right outside the gates of one of the nicer neighborhoods in the city. So it's not a good land use decision on the application of zoning. There are a number of other issues in this specific area. You've got properties that are owned by the city that are zoned multi-family. You've got multi-family that's zoned onto single-family homes, and you have some multi-family existing that's zoned single-family. So the way the zoning was applied to the zoning map just was not consistent with what was actually on the ground.
Is that this chart you're looking at? You point out an area number three, and I don't see that on the map.
Well...
Top left.
Top left. Okay. Pardon? Okay. Ah, gotcha, okay. That's the public housing. It's actually, it's harder, it's hard to see.
Is that, is that?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's a public housing development, which has a multi-family rental that's zoned single-family residential. All right, going on to the next slide here, this is the area around Tanner Hospital. You've got significant issues over here. First of all, you've got O&amp;I, which is your office institutional, which is intended to be your office in medical support areas, which you, which are accurately placed. However, the O&amp;I also includes gas stations, which would be a commercial use, includes single-family residential, and just a host of other misapplications of the actual zoning itself. The hospital, the, which is a medical institution, should be under O&amp;I to begin with, under the zoning. The mental health facility that's there on Dallas Highway also should be classified as an institutional facility. Both of those, however, are zoned general commercial, which is the same zoning as your Walmart stores, or your gas stations, or your Highway 61 corridor. There's, there's sort of a mislinkage between how the zoning reflects the uses, which should or should not be allowed in particular zoning district. This section articulates that.
On, on this chart, what is the designation of the blue area around the library?
The blue area around the library or around Tanner?
Well, it's...
That's a, okay, that's, that's office and institutional? So that would include, it does include your library, but it really should also include the hospital, because it would seem that if you were gonna have medical offices that are supportive of hospital functions, they should all be zoned the same.
Well, we just rezoned an area there for...
O&amp;I, yes, correct. And what we'll do with respect to the recalibration of the new zoning districts is that anything that was rezoned to a use will be kind of converted into the use category for what it would be under the new zoning. Skip forward to the next section. The next section would be the Liberty Road and I-20 off-ramp or exit. You've got a very large industrial distribution center there that's zoned Plan Development, which is actually tied in zoning-wise to the Mirror Lake development. Doesn't really make any sense for something like that that's industrial to be under PD. PD's really used exclusively for commercial and residential uses. Secondly, there are a number of light industrial uses that are currently in effect, such as the, there's an auction facility for vehicles that's right off the exit, and then there's some, some unusual uses that are kind of behind the gas station in a big open area that, all those are zoned heavy commercial, but that's not what they're being used for, so there's kind of a misapplication of what's being done there, either by allowing something that shouldn't be there, or just by it not being the right zoning district for the type of use that's being...
That's, that's becoming an issue.
And lastly, there are a number of applications of office institutional zoning, which don't really make much sense. There is, if you look at number nine on that page, there is a, let's see, try to, yes, that's a cell tower. I mean, why would you zone a cell tower office institutional? It really just doesn't make any sense. So we want to try to, like, you know, basically, take everything, hit the reset button, we're gonna be looking at the zoning and how to fix all the inconsistencies, not only with the content, but also how they're applied and where they're applied. Go on to the last slide. Oops. Let's see. I missed one. This is the Highway 61 and 20 corridor, and there are just a number of O&amp;I zones which are not applicable to the types of uses that are existing there. Again, we just want to go back and try to clean this up from the zoning map perspective. And lastly, to the benefit of the public, just kind of walk you quickly through the timeline. September the 3rd, the draft zoning ordinance was presented to the Planning Commission and to, actually not presented, but it was distributed to the Planning Commission and the City Council. September the 6th, hold on, let me, let me revise that. September the 3rd, the, the ordinance was put online for public review. September the 6th, it was presented to the Planning Commission, the City Council. October the 1st, the presentation to the zoning ordinance to the City Council, actually, got the dates backwards on that. And today was the presentation to the Planning Commission. We come back to the Planning Commission roughly two months from now on, actually, one month from now, November the 5th, to, to seek a recommendation to the City Council. It goes back to the City Council on the 12th of November, and goes for a final reading and adoption after the December 10th meeting, and the final adoption on January the 14th meeting. This is the general timeline that we're hoping to stick with. I know it's a very complex and overwhelming document to some extent, but we've tried to kind of lighten it up and make it, make more sense by getting more into, like, illustrating the, the content to make it a little more user-friendly. So that's where we are. Just wanted to let the public know that this document is on the city's website, www.villarica.org. And if there are any questions or comments, you could feel free to email them to me at C-M-O-N-T-E-S-I-N-O-S@villarica.org, and I thank you very much for your time if you have questions.
You indicated there was an additional seven pages or something that you have written?
Yes.
We have not seen that?
Yes. Those, those actually were based on the comments that you had provided on one section, which was a section that you would like to see on the handicap parking, and I believe I provided you with a copy of the draft of that section.
That's basically it.
And then there was another section, and I will, I will put those together and present those when it actually comes back to you for an action.
So any other questions, who needs to email you?
Sure, yeah.
Because I have some knit things that, you know, are not like the other ones in the United States.
Well, this is a lot more to knit, pick.
You really have done an excellent job, it's you and Ron and whoever else was involved in this. I mean, the UDC has been in sad shape for years, if not decades.
Yeah.
And I keep referring, referring to it on occasion, and it is in sad shape, so no question that this is needed, and you have really expanded on some of the sections that are in there.
Well, I certainly appreciate you guys reviewing it and your dedication to that, your contribution, so it's all part of the... and your contributions, so it's all part of the process. I thank you for that.
Well, thank you for that work.
Thank you. Okay, since we did a reversal, there's no staff comments, right? Okay. Next up is public comments. If a group wishes to speak, one person must be designated to speak for the group. Please sign the sign-in sheet with your name and address. All public comments limited to 10 minutes. Any takers? Well, I said group, I could say group and person, but okay.
I have a comment to make a general. You know, the city is in a dire water drought, and I don't see any forecast for any substantial relief from that. I'm wondering, is there any considerations being given to shutting off sprinkler systems and irrigation systems, going to the odd even watering, or anything of this nature? I mean, we're in trouble.
The last time that we dealt with this, there was a decision made at the state level on the drought condition by either region or county, and that hasn't happened yet, which we're surprised about.
Well, they've been getting rain downtown more than we've been getting, so.
Well, yeah, we haven't gotten any rain.
I've not had any measurable rain in.
Six weeks or longer?
Yeah.
I don't know, it's been a long time. So we're listening for it, but we haven't seen it.
And we can't do anything until that happens?
I've not asked that question. I don't know, I don't know. I'll ask Pete and see if he's got any experience with that, with a municipality doing it prior to the state making a.
Reservoirs must look like mudslides, so.
Well, what's happened is we typically produce about a million-three a day, and when the drought started, you know, we were pulling out of all, really out of two reservoirs. One, we actually pull out of one reservoir, there's three. So one, gravity feeds into the second, and then one we pump into. So the one at the bottom, we're still pulling out of. The one that we pump from, we're pumping about half as much as normal, and the top one, we're getting nothing out of. Because once it gets to a certain point, it's below the outlet structure and nothing's happening. So we went from a million-three a day to a million a day pretty early, and then we went to a half million a day three weeks ago or so. Well, when we do that, we have to purchase the difference in Carroll County water. Well, they got the same thing going on, and they have peak days during the week, you know, just like anybody does. And so they've asked us to artificially increase our production on their three peak days of the week. So what we did was we went to the upper pond and siphoned two feet of water in order to have enough to take us through maybe the month of October, being able to do 500,000 a day, four days a week, and a million a day, three days a week. So we're really not impacting Carroll that badly during the three peak days of their system, you know, another 300,000 a day. And then the days that we are hitting them pretty hard are the days that aren't their peak, where they have the capacity. So we're working with them, and that's how we're getting around it. But after October, you know, if we don't get rain this month, it's gonna get really ugly.
Well, basically, you're saying it isn't quite as bad yet as it was, what, four or five years ago?
It was, it predated me, so I've only heard stories. But we, when Pete first got here, we had algae bloom followed by drought, if I remember the order, and we bought 100% of our water from Carroll for a while.
That was in the water towers, I think, I remember reading it, the algae bloom or something like that, or, it's like, nice.
Yeah, we spend a good bit on chemicals treating for that, to keep it from ever getting going. The hot weather, the low levels, the water gets, the water chemistry changes some when it dissipates, you don't have water coming in and water going out, so you've got a certain amount of blending and activity, you know, in a normal condition now. What's there just sits there all day, heats up, cools off, heats up. So the chemistry's different.
And the areas around, some of them are getting water. It was Harrelson County or another county, the county south of us got a fairly, they had a storm, it's 60 mile an hour winds, so we got nothing. We're not living right, I guess.
That's it.
Well, thank you, Tom, for that update, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is adjournment. All those in favor of adjournment, raise a right hand. All those that wanna stay, your left hand. Motion carries, we're adjourned.